For your patience, we'll get our meeting called to order. I will state in advance for the record that Pam Niles, our Vice President, is not feeling well today and instead of spreading her germs amongst all of us, she elected to stay home. And with that, we will ask our secretary to take role.
With that comment, all other board members are present.
And this evening, if you would please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mike Kirchner is going to lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you going to keep going down there? Okay. We have a number of very, very special presentations this evening. And we will have Dr. Wall leading us along with Jimmy Enskee from Carmel High School.
Thank you, Mrs. Spannenberg and members of the board. It's my honor and privilege to be with you once again tonight to recognize two outstanding programs. First, our girls' swimming and diving team. We have some of our seniors with us tonight and head coach Chris Plum. I'm going to have them approach the table up here while I tell you a little bit about 30 years of excellence for this program. As you may have heard or read lately, this is a record that's been coming for a long, long time, three decades of excellence for the girls' swimming and diving program. And what that's reflection of is 30 consecutive seasons of state championships, which set a new national high school record in any sport all time this season. And we're very, very proud of these young ladies, but also 29 seasons of excellence before them as well. And they've been kind of treated like rock stars over the last month. We met with the governor and went on the floor of the Senate, had a banquet the day after the meet with over 300 in attendance, including a lot of family members and former swimmers going back to that first year in 1986. So it's been quite a whirlwind over the last two months, and I can't say enough about the dedication that goes into a streak like that. But it really starts with families that believe in the process and believe in the commitment of our staff and adults that work with their young people as well. So it takes everybody to achieve something like that, and we're very, very proud of all of them and especially these three seniors and our head coach, Chris Plum, who are here this evening. Just a few words about this year's team, number 30. They had an outstanding season. And among other things, they won nine out of the 11 swimming events at the state finals. Claire Adams, who's with us, also won the IHSA Minal Attitude Award and set a record for most individual or relay state championships all time at 16. Now, to put that into perspective, you can only race in four events every year at the state finals, meaning that she was undefeated 16 for 16 in events at the state finals. So congratulations to Claire. Veronica Burchill is not with us this evening and would have set the individual record with 15, but Claire also swims with her. So. But just it's an unbelievable feat for all of them and these other young ladies with her this evening. I will have them approach the podium here in a moment. But to put into perspective, they scored 438 points at this year's state meet, which is the second most all-time scored. Just fell short of last year's record set by the same team, 445. So really, an outstanding meet. You could have added the second and third place points together, it still would not have defeated the Greyhounds. So come up forward and tell us your name, where you're going to school, and what your major's going to be.
Okay. Hi, I'm Claire Adams. I'm going to the University of Texas next year, and I plan to major in education and Spanish.
Hi, my name is Katie Schleis. I'll be swimming at the University of Kansas next year, and I plan on majoring in business.
Hi, I'm Jackie Pash. I'm going to the University of Akron next year, and I'm going to be studying education as well.
If you can just stay there, we're going to bring members of the boys' team up. We also did a first-ever this year. We did a trophy walk through the halls of Carmel High School to end the school day about a month ago, a week after the state finals, in which the girls walked a mile and 1.25 miles with the trophy through the halls of the school at the end of the school day. And every student in the school, 5,000, came out to greet them outside their classrooms in a continuous standing ovation for about 30 minutes. So it was kind of a neat thing for us and something I'm sure they will not forget. The boys' swimming and diving team also won a state championship this year. They could come forward, a couple of the seniors off of that team. And I've watched a lot of sporting events over many, many years of 41 of my life of sports being pretty much it, and this is one of the most memorable events I've ever attended. The boys' team trailed the entire meet and trailed going into the final event of the day, which is the 400-yard freestyle relay. No, why that's so hard for me, I'm so excited. We had to finish two places ahead of Zionsville to win the meet. And very, very close race, won the state championship by one point. And that's the closest ever, obviously, in IHSA history. But can't say enough about all of the teamwork that went into this event. Every single point, every single swim, meaning so much. The timing system going down at the nautatorium with three events to go and nobody in the nautatorium knowing what the team scores were in the last three events, other than our very own assistant coach Connor Bradley, who had a spreadsheet going. So very, very exciting meet, and we couldn't be more proud of them. Had two individual state champions at the state meet, Charles Vaughn and Troy Lee. And it was just a tremendous, tremendous meet. Back-to-back champions, five times in the last seven years, and the 15th overall for the boys' program, which leads the state of Indiana. So I'll have these two young men come up and introduce themselves, where they're headed to school, and what their potential major might be.
I'm Troy Lee, and I'm going to be swimming at Brown University next year, and I intend on majoring in biochemistry.
I'm Joey Vineyard, and I'll be attending Purdue University, and I'll be majoring in computer science.
Everyone knows who you are. Obviously, it's an honor to be head coach of the Carmel High School program. It was a fantastic year, but I think it's important to recognize that it's not just the swimming, but it's the culture of the city and the culture of the school that I think kind of breeds a success. And we wouldn't be here for, weren't for the leadership of Dr. Wall, President, oh, President, Principal Williams, and he is president. Yeah, he might like that. And Athletic Director Jimmy Enskee, the facilities, both in the weight room and in the pool, the commitment of the parents and the school, it's just been tremendous. The support we had this year was amazing, and just want to say thank you for creating such a fantastic environment for this kind of learning and leadership to develop. So, thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have our Spotlight on Excellence. And this is the point in time which we celebrate the wonderful things that are happening in the district with our staff and students. And with that, we're going to turn back to Dr. Wall, who's going to share something very exemplary in our district.
We have a very special Spotlight on Excellence tonight. I'm pleased to present this to the board and to the community. And I'd like to bring up Prairie Trace Principal, Ms. Jill Ship, please, if she could come up. We have an exemplar in our staff that we really need to shine light on and be thankful that she's a member of the Carmel Clay School, staff, and community. Jill?
Thank you. I'm so honored to be here tonight to help recognize one of our incredible classroom teachers, Mrs. Beth Peaslee. I'd like to share a letter with you that was written to Dr. Wall after one of our students, Aiden, suffered an emergency in the classroom and how it was handled. Dear Dr. Wall, the phrase "everyday hero" is something that resonates much deeper for me after witnessing one in action last week. I wanted to take a moment to recognize one of your amazing teachers, Mrs. Beth Peaslee. Last Friday, my son, Aiden, a third grader at Prairie Trace, had a true medical emergency in the classroom. He was eating a lollipop when the head of the sucker came off and lodged in his throat. Aiden had a complete obstruction and was unable to talk or breathe. He was close to passing out. By the grace of God, he immediately knew he was in trouble and went to Mrs. Peaslee for help. Mrs. Peaslee did everything perfect in that moment. She recognized that he was choking. She remained calm. She called for help, notified 911, and performed the Heimlich maneuver on Aiden, saving his life. Not only did she have the courage to do all of this, she didn't give up when it took six attempts. She did the thing that we all pray we never have to do, and she did it effectively. The gratitude I feel toward her is indescribable. Teachers are called to wear a lot of hats during the school year. As parents, we entrust them to instruct, nurture, discipline, and grow the minds of our children each day. An everyday hero is one who can do all of these things as well as respond in a split second to a parent's worst nightmare and save a life by doing the right thing. Beth Peaslee deserves recognition for her bravery and heroism. Thank you for having such an amazing teacher in our school district. Sincerely, Carrie Lemme. So that day. That day was a very emotional day. Aiden did also the right things. I have to say, everyone in that entire building did the right thing that day. And by the time I got to the room, it was very calm. The kids did the right thing. They immediately ran next door to another teacher. The teacher next door called 911. Everything went as we always plan and all of the safety protocols that we go through and the plan of actions that we have. So it truly is a success all the way around. And I think my friend, Aiden, would like to come up and share his thoughts about his Mrs. Peaslee, do you want to come up too?
I would like to say thank you to Ms. Peaslee for saving my life and how such an awesome teacher she is.
Do you want to share about the letter that you wrote also?
I wrote a letter to the company, Columbolina Company, who makes Tiger Pops, telling them about what happened to them.
So I just am so thankful that we have the training that we have as educators to know what to do. You never think that's going to happen in your classroom, do you, Aiden? But Aiden did the right thing, and he came up to me, and I just didn't really have time to think. I just got up and acted, and we're so glad that it turned out the way it did. And of course, we turned it into a learning experience. We wrote a business letter to the company, and we're waiting to see if they respond. Aiden asked them to either discontinue the Tiger Pop or change the design, right? So we're hoping that we hear back from them. We'll see what they do. So. Jennifer is going to take a couple pictures for us since everyone is here. So if you don't mind being patient, we'll probably pause for about maybe five minutes, and we'll allow you some picture pages moment. you let the board know what they respond? We're very interested. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public participation. We have two people wishing to speak. The way it works in Carmel Clay Schools is you'll approach the podium, you will state Yes. Just this way, just a little bit. your name and address for the record. Perfect. All right. Starting, one, two, three. You will have three minutes to share your comments. We have, it's color-coded up there. One, two. Oh, go ahead. When you have about 30 seconds left, the yellow light will illuminate, and when your three minutes is up, the red light will also illuminate, and a buzzing sound will signify Okay. One, two, three. your three minutes are up. One, two, three. And with that, we will begin with Emily Rollin.
Hi, my name's Emily Rollin, and I reside at 1241 Silkins Road, Brunson, Michigan.
One, two, three. Perfect.
I wanted to first say thank you for this open forum and giving me the three minutes to talk. I probably don't need that much time. I would like to address the board and request a consideration to board policy in regards to the acceptance of exchange students into Carmel Schools. It has been traditional, traditionally, they have only worked with the Rotary, the local Rotary. And I know for at least the last four years, Rotary has not had students, enough students for the families that would like to host in the spots that are available at Carmel School. Our organization is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, recognized by the Department of State and CSIET. We have a local person, Dorothy, who's with me tonight, and she has families in the Carmel School District who would like to host exchange students. We have, in the past, always directed them to the local Rotary, but for at least three years now, there have not been students, exchange students, available through Rotary for these families to host. And I think that the families in the community are missing a great opportunity to not be able to participate in student exchange. Rotary's a wonderful organization. They've been around longer than probably any other student organization in existence. But there are about 90 programs approved by the Department of State like ours that are nonprofit. And the approval process is slightly rigorous, and to be fully approved through the Council on Standards for Educational Travel, there's quite a lot of requirements that have to be met there as well. And so Dorothy and I would like to ask if the board would consider, take under advisement, to open those spots if Rotary can't fill them, to allow our organization to present students to the school for the families that live in the district that would like to host. And as in any school district in the area, the exchange students don't present an undue burden financially on the schools. They're counted in the general student count, just like an American student on a J visa. The Department of State approves organizations and approves the students to come on the J visa issued by our program, overseen by our program, and they get the same funding that any other student does for one school year. And that was the intent of the Hays-Fulbright Act in the '60s to present this, to improve, you know, international relations. After the war, they were trying to, the US government was trying to look for a way to improve the relations between the US and other countries, and that is where student exchange started. So I brought only three folders. It has some information about our organization. I will leave with you. And if you have any questions, my contact information and Dorothy's is in here as well. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Dorothy Cook.
Do I have to press a button? No, okay. Okay, my name is Dorothy Cook. I'm the local support for international experience. I live in Fisher's 13298 Summerwood Lane. I'm the local support, and I work successfully with other high schools in the area. We have a great program, and we allow our families to choose their perfect student or their perfect fit for the family, which makes us different from the Rotary Club. I've been working with six families in the Carmel community throughout the past four years, and I have checked in with them again this year. I've always given them information about the Rotary and how they can apply for the program for Carmel High School. And I've checked in with them again this year, and they told me they are still interested in working with us. And somehow, it didn't work out with the Rotary. Either they didn't have exchange students available, or they weren't able to pick a student, or the communication didn't work. So that's why we're here. And I think another, most of the families that are applying for the program, they have students in the Carmel High School District, or of course, they live in the high school district. And another thing that is different from us and from the Rotary, we offer a three-week immersion program for host siblings to go to Germany for free to have a little peek in experience. Most of the host siblings actually, from host families, they do that. They go to Germany and they attend a three-week immersion program and live with the German host family and have the chance to get that experience and get that full scholarship. So I would love to offer that to Carmel families as well. And also, I would love to work with Carmel High School because I know they're, it's a great high school, and yeah, it would be wonderful to start working relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have consent. May I have a motion to approve consent? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our first action item this evening is our bid award for the exterior and mechanical upgrades of Carmel High School's nautatorium. With that, we'll turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is a project to repair the roof structure as well as replace the roof itself over a portion of the nautatorium, recommending the low bidder, which is Myers Construction Management Company. And this project is being funded with bond funds that we obtained last year in the 2015 general obligation bond sale.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion on the table to approve the bid award? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
I just want to put a question forth, and I had put it through email, but just for those listening, can you just speak a little bit to how this timing has been worked with the programs and to keep their needs in mind too?
Yes, we met with Coach Plum, actually, and as well as Jim Enskee, the Athletic Director. And they thought that the first of the, or the month of June, basically, would be the best time to do this, and they have made arrangements, knowing that the pool will not be available, they've made other arrangements for their summer programs.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table. All in favor of supporting the bid award for the exterior and mechanical upgrades of the Carmel High School nautatorium? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next, change orders to the Carmel High School fitness remodel and the fire alarm.
Yes, this is a deduct change order. It's a close-out change order for that project.
We'd like that. We have a motion on the table to approve their change order with our deduct. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
For our next item, we turn to Dr. Dudley, the engineering and technology materials adoption.
Yes, thank you. And this evening, I bring to you for board action the recommendations for the middle school engineering and technology materials that we will use next year. I brought this to you last month for discussion, and so this evening, I bring it to you for action.
I have a motion on the table to approve the materials list that we have for the technology materials.
Move to approve all the materials.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Dr. Dudley, we return to you for our communications materials.
Thank you. And this evening, I also bring to you the communications materials recommended by the Communication Adoption Committee, that where they looked at these materials and are recommending these to be in use for next year for our students at the high school and our communication courses.
I have a motion on the table to approve the communication materials.
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, okay. Then we move right along to discussion. And our first discussion item, I will go ahead and lead with that. It's Policy 5111 eligibility for enrollment. This has been sitting on our docket for a while, and we realized it was an oversight. We've had some changes to the amendment, Indiana Code 202611-2.5. And what you will notice, the changes that we have include removing the 14-day requirement for notification of enrollment. The other change with the code, it also references that students of employees can come to the school system school. We already extended that benefit to our employees, so we just included that language in this particular policy. Those would be the only additions to this particular policy. Do you have any questions about Policy 5111? It'll be our intent to bring this back in April for a final reading. Okay. Well then, moving right along, Dr. Wall, we have you next on the administrative reorganization.
Thank you. We're in Phase Four, and as we've been updating the board on administrative reorganization, we've looked at, we're in reallocation mode. As you can see by the summary that we put together, one of the things that is on our strategic plan is to look at the district technology integration plan. As we're looking at challenges and areas that we want to go into, frankly, we see our systems continuing to be something that we rely on. I can remember early in my superintendent career, when you started to look at systems for food service and systems for attendance and systems for grades, and then they became how we do business. Because you knew that when they went down, everything slowed down and or stopped. So as we look at the systems that we have and enhancing those, example, a learning management system, an LMS system. We look very forward to that opportunity, and this semester, any teacher that has an interest can beta test an LMS, the LMS that we're looking at, that the committee recommended we look at. And we want strong feedback from them to see if that's the system that we may want to recommend at the end of this year for next year. But regardless, we're looking at that system. And as we look at that, we see the need to make sure that we have the administrative oversight to take these, not only manage these systems... It'll be our intent to bring this back in April for a final reading. Okay. Well then, moving right along, Dr. Wall, we have you next on the administrative reorganization.
Thank you. We're in phase four and as we've been updating the board on administrative reorganization, we've looked at, we're in reallocation mode. As you can see by the summary that we put together, one of the things that is on our strategic plan is to look at the district technology integration plan. As we're looking at challenges and areas that we wanted to go into frankly, we see our systems continuing to be something that we rely on. I can remember early in my superintendent career when you started to look at systems for food service and systems for attendance and systems for grades and then they became how we do business. Because you knew that when they went down, everything slowed down and or stopped. So as we look at the systems that we have and enhancing those, example, a learning management system, an LMS system. We look very forward to that opportunity and this semester, any teacher that has an interest can beta test an LMS, the LMS that we're looking at, that the committee recommended we look at. And we want strong feedback from them to see if that's the system that we may want to recommend at the end of this year for next year. But regardless, we're looking at that system. And as we look at that, we see the need to make sure that we have the administrative oversight to take these, not only manage these systems, but make sure they're reliable on a daily basis. I really commend the IT department to date because we have become more reliant. They did an amazing transfer last year with the human resource and benefits and business software transition. That was a significant amount of professional development, work with the consultant on getting that in place. So it's been very impressive what our IT staff has done. But we're looking at sustainability. And in so doing that, we looked at phase three last year, which I attached for board reference. And in phase three, we had an ongoing savings for salary of $28,500. We had looked at some changes going for phase three and one of those being an HR supervisor. We realized with the construct that we have in that department that that's something we don't need in phase three. And under Rogers' management, there's been some realignment in HR and benefits in the business office. We've also had some new hires and these are ongoing savings for salary supervisor of accounting and assistant director of human resources. So as you can see with the suggested recommendation going forward of an IT director, which we believe is a very important administrative component to sustain what we have and to enhance what we have going forward, we still have an ongoing savings of salary with $5,850. And it's important that I included phase three in there just so we continue to connect those dots in the phases that we have taken on the last three years. And again, we're in reallocation. The exciting part of this is the things that we're looking at going forward with the district technology plan are good for teachers and students and that's what we're about. But we do have to have the oversight and the ability to direct and manage those functions as well. Again, within the confines and actually continuing to contain the ongoing salary for these positions. So very excited to keep everything moving along.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. Does the board have any questions, any follow-up concerns or ideas or? Kathy?
I apologize for not getting this to you earlier, but it just popped into my head. This proposed salary for the IT director, is that within a range or what, is that going by what scale?
That is, to be very clear, that includes not only the salary, but taxes and everything that goes along with that position. So it's all, it's the whole package, correct?
Well, I guess I'd like to say a big thank you. I know when we brought you onboard, almost three years ago, having you take a very strong look at the entire district in our FTEs and how they're being allocated and are they being allocated in the most appropriate manner to support student learning. You have incrementally made changes after you had an appreciation of where the district stood. And this, I think, supports what you have really been pushing for all along and being certain that we are allocating our funds to support student growth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Good.
Thank you. We'll bring this back then for the next, it'll be under personnel as an action item as part of the personnel report, so you know where it is.
Okay. Oh, and I did have just one real quick question.
Sure.
LMS. When will the beta testing be complete? When are we hoping to have a decision?
Timeline wise, Amy, can you help me out with that? This semester, any teacher has the chance, opportunity if they so choose.
So yes, so this semester, we have many, many teachers that are beta testing the LMS and we're collecting their feedback. And so by the end of this year, we would like to make a recommendation of either we go with this LMS or we go back to the drawing board to determine that we may need another if the feedback is not positive. But so far, we have received a lot of really good feedback and our teachers are excited, the ones that are beta testing so far.
Can you remind me again which LMS we're beta testing?
Canvas.
Canvas. Thank you. Any other questions? Since it's just me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll turn to reports. Dr. Dudley, student achievement.
Thank you. And this evening I want to give a brief report on our student achievement and look at student achievement from a variety of different assessments that we use in our district to measure that student achievement and also to look at the growth. And as you'll recall, last year in elementary and then this year in our middle school, we started using the MAP assessment, which is an NWEA product. And MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. And so the MAP assessment is very different from an I-Step-like assessment or an SAT or an ECA assessment. Where it is an interim assessment, it's used multiple times to look at that student growth. It also can predict achievement on I-Stets tests, when they get the alignment studies together. Right now, they have alignment studies for ACT and it predicts all the way down to fifth grade to looking at how they might project in how they'll do if they take the ACT. They don't have those alignment studies with SAT as of yet because SAT has not shared the data with NWEA, but they're trying to get that as well. And also we use it to look at how we can differentiate for the individual needs of the students. So we look at this at an individual rate. But this evening, what I'm bringing to you is looking at our mean or our average of our students' growth. And so this first graph that I have on the screen here, this is measuring the students' growth from winter of last year to winter of this year. So this would be, for example, the kindergarten graph is measuring, the turquoise one is measuring students' growth in kindergarten of their winter assessment last year and then this year their assessment in winter of first grade. So it's looking at the cohort of students. So it's a full year of data. So the turquoise is the math and then the yellow is the reading growth. And so that, their RIT growth is the average growth that our students, for example, the first bar is made in math in kindergarten to first grade. So it is a cohort, we're looking at a cohort group of students. And so the blue diamonds, what that gives us is the projected growth. And you'll remember, the RIT score, that is an equal interval score that we use kindergarten ultimately through 12th grade. And it's similar to like inches on a ruler. It is always an equal interval apart. And that gives us, as we look at the mean, we can see the blue diamonds are the projected mean growth. So the projected mean growth, you can see in kindergarten, in math, we are exceeding that projected mean growth. First to second grade, we're not there yet and all the way up through our fifth to sixth grade students. And then the blue diamonds, again, is the projected RIT mean growth for our students. As you can see, in kindergarten to first, we're again exceeding it. First to second, we're right there. And then we have some work to do in some of our other grades. Our fourth to fifth in reading, you can see we're meeting that growth. So that, we always have, as we continue to look forward, as you know from our I-Step scores, many times our I-Step scores are very good, but we always have room for improvement and this is measuring their growth. So it gives us another piece of, okay, no matter how good, you know, our students are achieving, we can always continue to improve in that growth wherever they're at. And again, this is the mean, so this is all of our students together. So this next graph is a little bit different in that this is measuring different groups of students. And this first one is measuring just math. And so as you can see, the gold measurement, that is measuring math in 2000, last year's, 2014-15. And then the magenta is measuring the growth this year, 2015-16. So it's looking at their growth in the fall as compared to the winter. And then as you can see, the diamonds show the projected growth. And in math, our grade levels are either exceeding or they're getting closer in the second year. For our middle school, this is our first year that we've used it with middle school, so we only have one year of data for middle school. And then this next graph, it's the same, it's measuring two different groups of students. So it's measuring last year's kindergartners compared to this year's kindergartners, but it's looking at reading growth. And again, you can see the diamonds are where the projected growth are and on the second year, we are getting much closer to that projected growth based on the NWEA norms. So with that, let me just pause to see, because that's, we're looking at our MAP assessments. If you have some questions, that might be easier to take it in chunks.
Good question. Thanks. I didn't know when to quite jump in or not. So looking at the projected diamonds there, you pointed out that with the second year of data, we are getting closer. So we're seeing that we're being purposely responsive to the information we're given. But in most situations, in most cases, not quite there yet. Is this a typical layout that you're making progress, but it takes several years to get there or should we be worried that the scores aren't quite as real as projected?
No, I think this is a typical piece. We should be worried if it's not, if we're not getting any closer to that projected growth. However, last year was the first year we had the data and, you know, helping out, learning how to use that data, learning how to look individually, looking also at, from the class view as well, to meet the needs of the individual students and to really differentiate. So as you said correctly, we're becoming more responsive. This data is helping us to become more responsive to the needs of our students and the expectation would be for us to continue to get closer and closer to that projected growth as we get more comfortable with using the data and understanding how to use that.
Who's determining what this projected growth is? Is that automatically generated through NWEA? Is this the cohort across the entire nation? Who, what is this?
What the, where the projections come from is the, the RIT score, when, for an individual student, for example, if you are a parent, you would get a report for your child. And so what you would see is here's their RIT score and then their projected RIT score on their next assessment. And where that projected RIT score comes from is from the NWEA norms. And they just did a norming study and they have new norms out for 2015. And those norms are comprised of all the students that had that same starting RIT score. So if they scored a 234 of all those students, what was their average growth when they took it again in the winter or they took it again the next fall? And so the projected growth comes from the mean of all of those students, from the mean RIT and then from those norms as far as, so you're looking at the mean projection.
Okay.
So moving on, and these graphs would look very familiar with you. As you know, last year, I-Step did change and the questions now assess the new Indiana standards, which are much more rigorous. And as you know, many of our, actually all around the state, we saw a, an increase in the Did Not Pass. And we're no exception. We did have a smaller increase in Did Not Pass than many of our districts around the state, which was a good thing. Interestingly, in these graphs for our, this is for English Language Arts in third, fourth and fifth grade, looking at data over several years from 2010 all the way to last year, it's interesting to see that our Pass Plus in both third grade and fifth grade increased, even though the standards, the test was much more rigorous and difficult. So we can see that we did have an increase in that Pass Plus. And so this next one is looking at sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And as you can see, our seventh and eighth grade, again, our Pass Plus did increase. So this next set of graphs is looking at third, fourth and fifth grade in math. And again, we do see that increase in, Did Not Pass for math in all three grades here on this graph, similar to all of the schools around the state. And then again, in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, they follow that same trend, is the increase in the Did Not Pass. This next set of graphs is looking at the science assessment, which was, which is given in fourth grade, sixth grade, and then the students also take biology after they complete Biology I in the high school. This assessment did not change. This was not based on new standards. This was the same assessment that the students have taken in the past. And we do see an increase in our Pass Plus in sixth grade, which is a positive thing. And as you may or may not recall, we did not take social studies last year, so we do not have any data to compare. Social studies is a state required assessment, not a federal assessment. And so we had the option not to and because the test was so long, we opted not to take social studies last year. Now, the, this is the results for our English 10 ECA. This, for these students from last year, the 14-15, this was their, one of their graduating qualifying exams, which is English 10 ECA as well as the Algebra 1 ECA, that they have to pass both of those. This assessment did not change. One thing our students did have to take that was different for 10th grade, it did not count, but they were doing testing questions for the accountability piece that our 10th graders take this year. Our 10th graders will take both the ECA for the graduating qualifying exam and they will also take the new I-Step for the accountability piece. And so the test for our 10th graders will be longer this year because they'll have to take both of those assessments. But our scores stayed fairly stable from comparing them from last year to this year. But you can see over the years from, back from 2009-10, we have seen an increase in that Pass Plus. So this next set of graphs is looking at our ECA Algebra 1. Again, this assessment did not change, but what did change for our assessment, you may be saying, whoa, look at the Pass Plus, what's going on? What did change is last year, typically in, like in 13-14, those were all students that took Algebra 1. About 50% of our students take Algebra 1 in eighth grade, which is an advanced class. And typically, we have 100% pass rate in eighth grade. Last year, our students in eighth grade who were taking Algebra 1 were not required to take the Algebra 1 ECA because their, their graduating qualifying exam will actually be the 10th grade I-Step that they will take when they're in 10th grade. Pardon? And so we did not have our eighth grade students take the Algebra 1 ECA. And so that's why you're not seeing, you're seeing only students in high school that took Algebra 1 that was their, so any ninth grader or 10th grader that was taking Algebra 1, this is only reflecting their data. So this is, it's not comparing apples to apples for the two years.
Amy, Kathy has a question.
Just because you said that they, they will have their qualifying tests as 10th graders with I-Step, but at this time, we don't really know if it will be I-Step.
Well.
Because the I-Step is done next year, when they're ninth graders.
It'll be something.
Well, no, they'll be 10th graders next year.
Oh, that's right.
Because they were eighth graders last year. So they will have it for one year. This year's eighth graders, we don't know, but this data reflects last year's.
Amy, approximately how many less students do you think were in the 14-15 group since our eighth graders?
Um, about, let's see, about 50% of our eighth graders take it, take Algebra 1 in eighth grade. And we have, so it's about half of the ninth grade class would have taken it, so about...
What about seventh graders who are in honors? So that, I mean, that's a lot of students who aren't in that big group.
Yeah, any student that, before, it used to be any student, once they completed Algebra 1, they took this assessment, whether they took it in seventh grade, eighth grade, and we actually had some sixth graders.
That's like a few hundred, definitely.
Oh, it's at least more than that. It's probably at least 500, 600.
Wow, okay.
It's about half the freshman class. Okay, so this next graph is looking at our SAT scores across the years from 2010 to 2014-15. And as you can see, our average score has increased over the time where, and also the number of students taking the SAT also has increased. So the average score increased only by one from 2010, from 1691 to 1692. However, the number of students increased from 88.8% to 91.7%. So we have more students taking the SAT, but their score, their average score is still continuing to keep up the trend. continuing to keep up with the trend. And then this next graph shows that our students, the tall bar graphs, are our students, their scores in reading, math, and writing on SAT. And they are consistently outperforming the students in, the rest of the students in the state, as well as the rest of the students in the nation, in all three, in years from 2011 all the way to 2015.
So, quick question. Is the state then on the left and the nation on the right, when looking at that bar graph?
The state is the lightest.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
The state is the lightest in, in the front. Okay, so this next graph is looking at our Advanced Placement Test. As you can see, the number of tests that our students have taken has increased quite significantly. And then the number of students taking the test as well, which is the yellow bar, has increased. But that has, the number of students who have received a 3 or greater, in order to get possible college credit, they need to have, score a 3 or greater on the AP test. And you can see that has continued to increase as well. So even though we have more students taking more tests, we still continue to get those high scores, which is a very positive thing. And this next graph, this is quite an impressive graph. This is our AP Scholars. And so our students that are AP Scholars, in order to be an AP Scholar, you have to earn a 3 or higher on at least three AP scores. To be a Scholar with Honor, you have to earn a 3, an average score of a 3.25 on all AP tests that you take, and you have to earn a 3 or higher on four or more AP tests. And to be a Scholar with Distinction, you have to have an average of a 3.5 on all the AP tests, and you have to score a 3 or higher on five or more. So these are our students. And you can see the number of students that we have that are Scholars, Scholars with Honors, and also Scholars with Distinction, has continued to increase over the years, which is very exciting. And our last graph, this is looking at our IB exams and the number of students. And as you can see, over the years, the number of students taking IB exams has increased quite significantly. And then on an IB exam, those exams are 0 out of 7 points. And in order to be considered for college credit, they need to earn a 4 or higher. And so as you can see, also, the percent earning a 4 or higher has also kept way up there, and it actually improved from last year, even though the number of students taking exams increased quite significantly. And our IB program is, we have a robust program as far as students enrolling in the IB. Not all the students take their, the IB exams, but as you can see, that is increasing. And so we'll continue to look at growing that program as well. So, any questions on any of the student data?
Kathy?
On the AP, we have the number of students who are taking tests, as well as the number of exams. Do we have a number of students that have taken the exams on the IB?
This is the number of exams. I do not have that data right here in front. I'm sure we could mine that data, but right now, I don't have it here.
Do you happen to know, and this is, it just popped into my head too, so sorry about this, pricing to take an IB exam as compared to taking an AP exam, are they about the same?
It depends on the exam. I believe the pricing for an IB exam is, like, I, I think it's, it's more expensive.
Okay.
But I would have to get, I think, but I want to say it's like $30 more.
Okay.
And then the AP exams, the state pays for AP in math and in science.
Oh.
So the students pay, it's about, I can't remember, about 70, is it about?
Eight.
Eighty?
Eight dollars.
Eight? No, 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 for math and science, but then for regular one, though.
Regular one's like 90, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I want to say the IB is like 120 or-
My other question, I have been told, I don't know if this is correct, but I'd been told that you do not actually have to take an AP course to take an AP exam.
That is correct.
Wow, okay. So you could just be really bright and just-
And, and that, I mean, some of our students, you know, it's amazing, some of our students, the Scholars with Distinction, we have some students that have taken eight, nine, 10 AP exams.
Wow.
Yes.
Other questions? Yes.
We have a couple of questions having to do with the IB exams. The first one is, was there any kind of, there was a huge difference this year on the number of exams taken? Was there a different way that this was advertised? Is there, was there a different approach?
A hundred more.
Yeah, what?
And that's, I mean, one of the things that they're, as they're looking to grow the IB program, is really encouraging the students to take the exams, helping them to see that it is worth their while to take them, because they do get credit for those exams in, if they score a 4 or higher, just as they do for an AP. So it's really, you know, educating the students and helping them to understand why it would be important to take those.
And that's done through their counselor?
It's done through their counselor, it's done through their teacher of the course.
And then, my other question has to do with, I have two nephews, one who's completed his IB diploma and one that's working on it, but, and they do not live in this area or state. And when I asked the older one, why did you choose an IB diploma? And he said, well, it's really all that's offered at our school. So if I wanted to take anything advanced, that's my only option. So my other question has to do with, here at Carmel High School, we offer several different options, because there's several, because every child's different, every student's Has anyone ever looked into trends, let's say, for schools that offer a variety of options for Advanced Placement and Advanced Study, on realistic goals for a number of IB diplomas, realistic goals for the number of IB tests compared to, not necessarily compared to AP, but for schools that offer a variety of options? So that we have realistic goals, I guess is what I'm looking for.
Right. Well, in, in one of the things, as we've been looking at the IB program, and we've had this, we've been having this conversation for, right, we've had it for at least 10 years, the IB program? Kathy, do you remember when?
Yeah, it's been, yeah, it's like about 2006, I think.
You know, is, because we have many students that take both AP and IB based on their interests, because IB is a very different philosophy than an AP, but they're both advanced. They're, you know, they're both excellent courses to take. And we have, our students are very fortunate that they have the opportunity to take those advanced courses, as well as we offer ACP courses, we offer many dual credit courses as well, which are all advanced courses. And all of those, and we have students to take some of each of those. But one of the questions is, is the goal to increase the number of students taking advanced courses such as IB? Or is the goal to increase the number of diploma students? Because the, the thing with the diploma students is they have to take a very strict schedule in order, a course of study, to complete the diploma. And many times, many of our students also have such a variety of interests that they want to take this AP class, or they want to take this Advanced Orchestra. And the only time this one course is offered, because it's a single course, is at this time. So it, so they have to make tough choices. And so many times, they'll forego the diploma, they'll still take the IB courses, but they may not take all of the courses that are required for the diploma. But it's still very robust as far as getting our students, giving them those opportunities to take those advanced courses.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for putting that perspective. Thanks.
I can say that over the years, when I was, when I was teaching at Carmel High School and then the whole thing started, we put a lot of thought into making sure we matched the right students with the IB program. Because it, it's like you said, you've done a really good job explaining it, it's not made for everyone. For instance, it's not really designed to be for real Advanced Math and Science students, it's probably not the best option for them. However, for a lot of the Liberal Arts and the, and the Humanities, it's a very good program. And so, you know, we need to encourage them. I know math, they need to get like a 6 or a 7 to get a credit in, at many schools. So that, that's why we used to push the math people, stay with AP. You know, and then same thing, but give them a variety. I think that's a great thing, that we give them the option.
Now, I did one other comment, I guess, not having to do with IB, but just in general, because there was several explanations that you had to give, like this year, this changed, this year, that changed. Are these going to go up on our dashboard in this format? And if so, is there a spot where we can put some of these little asterisks to help explain?
We can, some of these are already on our dashboard.
Okay.
And so, but we can certainly put those asterisks where the things have changed to make sure it's clear to people why the data looks a little bit different.
Yeah, especially like the, the Algebra 1, you know, some of those dramatic changes that really have a good explanation, but-
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Amy. That was very comprehensive and very interesting. Moving right along, we've got our superintendent's report. Dr. Wall, do you have anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
Nothing, nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have our board member report, and I know Mrs. Hackett has legislative report she'd like to share with us.
I do, I have, actually, the 2016 short legislative session officially ended the evening of Thursday, March 10. So I thought tonight, I'll do kind of a final wrap-up. Looking at our Carmel Clay 2016 legislative priorities, you can see on the screen, and how legislative language has, that made it through aligns with that. So as you can see, our first priority has to do with funding. Knowing this isn't a long session, and there's no budget dealt with, we still felt like there was certain funding priorities that really wouldn't be affected by a passing of a new budget. So if you can look at 1B, excuse me, Senate Bill 279, who is, which was authored by Stoops, is the one bill that survived that addresses referendum ballot language. The language spelled out in the bill should help CCS be more open and transparent should we choose to extend our current operation referendum. A conversation we'll have here in a few months, I assume, or will begin. Under this bill, when a school corporation wants, quote, "to extend a referendum levy", language can be included that the school corporation wishes to, quote, "continue to impose a, fill in the blank, certain amount, property tax rate." So you can put in that specific tax rate. And then, again in quotes, "The tax rate requested in this referendum was originally approved by the voters," and then you add a specific date and a specific length of time. So basically, the question, if extending, say, hey, we've already done this, this isn't a new tax rate, this is a continued tax rate, and here's some little bit of background information, and that would all go in the ballot. So that is good if we choose to extend it. So if you could go, look at 1F there, "Language addressing the permanent ability to use a school's capital projects fund to pay utility services and property and casualty insurance" died with the original two bills we were watching, but at the last minute, that language was inserted, or related language was inserted in House Bill 1109 authored by Houston. This bill extends the date to January 1st, 2018. So an extension, but not a permanent fix, which is kind of where it looked like the conversation was going anyway. Both the previous bill I talked about and this bill were both signed by Governor Pence on March 23rd, so those are all law now. And I also want to point out that House Bill 1109 turned out to be one of those bills that included a bunch of different education issues. So it will actually appear later in this report. Quickly, if you look at 1A and C, these two were not addressed at all. But, and actually, I want to say that Nick and I, when we talked with our legislators, there seemed to be really little state-level interest in making the referendum process smoother for those districts that rely on it. So note to self, no one said you can't do it, it's an option, but you must work for it. And then, neither 1D or E were addressed in specific bills. However, with our conversation with legislators, it seemed that legislators all agreed that these priorities are good in theory, and that would be flexibility between funds and fully funding state-mandated programs. But I have to say, even though these weren't addressed specifically, I found that putting these two issues in writing in front of our decision-makers and using them as bullet points for our talking points was key. And so I would say, I would suggest that when we look next fall into our next years, to keep either those or some rendition of those in there. That was really helpful. Then our second legislative priority had to do with better testing. And you'll recall that the session began with a quick legislative action to remove any negative influences the 2015 I-Step Plus scores would have on teacher pay and the accountability A through F grades for schools. These changes came through House Bill 1003 authored by Benning, and Senate Bill 200 authored by Cruz, Kenley, and Mishler. Then, House Bill 1395, again authored by Benning, repeals, and this is what Kathy was referring to, repeals the I-Step effective in 2017, and establishes a 23-member panel to determine an alternate, alternative standardized test by December 1st, 2016. So that is a quick, quick timeline. And this panel is also tasked with finding ways to reduce the cost of administering tests, as well as reduce the time students spend taking tests. In addition, this panel is to recommend how the new test should be used in issuing school accountability grades, and how it would affect teacher salaries. And this panel is also to look at the impact that every Schools Succeeds Act, ESSA, will have on Indiana testing. ISBA is looking to get somebody on this panel. Obviously, they're forming this panel probably as we speak, but also, you know, it has to be very soon, because they have a lot to do really quickly. And this bill was, I think this hit the papers, that this bill was signed by Governor Pence also. I would say, of all of our priorities, this area hit the most success. Because we put it out there, but also because there are many voices saying this. It was an ISBA legislative priority, Superintendent Ritz made it known, many of our professional teachers and administrators expressed concern, parents and teachers expressed concern, and, you know, power in numbers, that that was really important. So that's another note to self as we go forward, that power in numbers. And then our third legislative priority addresses two transportation-related issues. 3A, or with regard to 3A, House Bill 1109, that's that bill again, extends the eligibility of school corporations to allocate certain circuit breaker credits proportionally through 2018. And that's for school corporations that qualify for this, that's not every school corporation. And then 3B, any safe drop-off language was dropped from bill language. It was originally in Senate Bill 93. But it is now slated to be discussed in a summer study committee. And rumor has it, what happened there was, Senate Bill 93 was another one of these bills that includes a lot of different educational issues. And one legislator, because of one charter school, said, I will kill this whole bill if you keep that language in there. So Senator Cruz scrambled and took that language off, because there's a lot of other good things in there, but made sure it would be in a study committee. So that was, you know, in, in the scheme of things, a pretty good compromise, I'd say, but an interesting situation. And I just want to put out there that Superintendent Wall and I held nine meetings with state legislators, representatives from the IDOE Legislative and Policy Team, or representatives of national legislators, nine meetings total. That was, those were really good, I think. We made some really neat progress with conversations and relationships. And then April 21st, the ISBA Spring Regional Meeting is set, and Mike and I will go. And that tends to be the ISBA wrap-up, their legislative wrap-up, and then their kind of starting point to plan for next year. So I would put out that any board member, if you foresee some priority that we should look into next year, you want ISBA to consider, get that to Mike and I, and we'll make sure it gets in that process. So, really, that concludes my report. There are several other educational bills not aligned with our priorities that will affect our school district. But our council, as always, will go over that, get those results to Nick, who will keep us posted, I'm sure. So that is my wrap-up, unless anyone has something to add.
Mike?
I would just like to thank you, Tricia and Dr. Wall, for all the time that you put into this. And I think we've seen that it does make a difference, and our voices are heard, so I just want to thank you.
You know, I guess I'd like to add too, I think we might want to think about presenting how we go about this, our process, sometime at, maybe an ISBA conference or something. Because when I talk to people, I rarely find anyone that's, has a system as good as us at this point, and I find several that are just scrambling on how to start. And now that ISBA spearheads some of it, I think it's going to help a lot of other districts get forward, but they're still just kind of lost on how to have the conversation at a board level. at a board level, how to have it at a public venue, how to, that you would actually report progress. It's not that hard when you do one step at a time. If you do it all at one time, it is kind of mind-boggling. But anyway, something we might want to consider, I think.
Well, I do know that the applications for the Fall Conference, that was, last week was the deadline for that, I'd say, I think it was the 19th of March. But that might be a good conversation to have with Adamson or, or even Smith, because that could be a good winter session. I know we presented it, the winter session, for just our entire legislative process, or not our legislative process, but, what's it, our communicate, thank you. So, that would be a really neat opportunity for us to continue on that path.
Maybe at the regional meeting, Mike and I'll have a chance to just kind of-
Yes, I think that would be, because I know they're always looking for ideas, and that's a really, really great idea.
Okay.
And I'd like to echo what Mike said, that, thank you. You have really worked very hard, put a lot of time and energy into that, you and Nick, and it's neat to see the fruits of your labor, so, thank you. Any other board member reports? Only one thing I wanted to add, with regards to policy, we will have, we're going to be in policy to our workshop next month with regards to the renumbering and reordering. That'll be one of the couple of workshop topics that we're going to have. We have a number of different policies that are sitting with David Day right now to just make sure to tweak, so they are most appropriate to bring to the board. And so, next month, we will have a number of policies that'll reflect, well, a number of fun, exciting things for us. It will be time-consuming, so. But we're just, we're going to try to handle that all in April, so we can move along. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I wish everybody a very, very safe and joyful spring break. It's coming up. My kids would like to leave tonight. I was told as I was exiting, we're ready. I'm like, okay. So, with that, have a great holiday. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.